I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge School Committee Meeting. Committee of the whole, 25 call out room and 100, Monday, August 17, 2015, 7:00 PM. Cold water. Local.
Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Mrs. Condon.
Present.
Mr. Jovian.
Brown, excuse me, excused.
Mr. Condon.
Present.
Mr. Alivo.
Absent.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Mrs. Quinney.
Excuse.
Four present, one absent, two excuse.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Superintendent Search. A established search committee parameters. Superintendent is, um, chairman of the search committee handed out a document that put a tremendous amount of ideas. Okay, I'd just like to open it up for discussion. Parameters is basically what does the committee expect of the search committee? Such as how many members do you want? And then how many superintendents have the search, are they going to come forward, is it three, five? There are various things such as the timeline, community outreach, superintendent's qualifications, employee-related recruitment process, vacancies, I mean, isn't brochure that's usually done? I'm going to turn it over to Jill. Jill, can you talk to the committee about you contacting the NSC, where you're at and where you want to see them?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today I contacted MAS C last year. At MAS C I attended a conference searching for a new leader which passed out a booklet with search committee protocols and procedures, which I've had time to go through and come up with a timeline of, um, for an orientation for the search committee. So first was more of a job description. The past school committee had come up with a job description for the superintendent, which I would like at some point for the committee to take a look at. And we could have a meeting giving thoughts based on that job description. The other issue that I'm putting forward to the committee is the timeline that they would wish to see for the process of the search and advise the superintendent search committee on. How we would like to advertise for this position of superintendent? Do we want to do internal through MAS C and school spring? That's more of a, maybe, a recommendation. MAS C also talks about focus groups and my thought for that would be, that I would put forward to the committee would be a focus group possibly after every open house where we could have the parents and family members, maybe even faculty, students present after each open house and have question and answer period of what they would be looking for for the next superintendent of schools in Southbridge and possibly have a survey that is passed out to parents and family members when they come into each school for open house. So if the committee could advise the search committee on possible questions for the focus groups or if they would recommend that the committee have focus groups next week, I just think it would be a good time for that to take place because of all of the families that will be coming in for open house. And then I would ask the committee if they could recommend a number of candidates that they would like the search committee to recommend to the full committee.
Moving up to the floor, discussion. Page?
Yeah, so my preference on the whole, in general, the structure on this is that I think the search committee should be making a lot of decisions as to many of the things that you have put out there, the timeline and all of that kind of stuff. Yeah, we can say we want it done by this, but the committee has to be able to do that. So I think the search committee should try and, you know, we want to do this as quickly as we can, but at the same time we don't want to make it so fast that we miss opportunities or so. You know, my recommendation would be to leave that to the search committee itself. In terms of the number of names to forward and sort of the structure of how that's done, I would say in the neighborhood of three to five. Again, you don't want, I don't think we should be looking at less than three, but then again we don't want to be in a mood, you know? So that, you know, again, it could be a general guideline, so we like three to five sort of names to be forwarded. The role of the MAS C I think could probably be to sort of do a preliminary screen on the candidates that the search committee reviews or receives the applications to make sure that they are licensed, qualified, and all of that kind of stuff. MAS C should not be making decisions or recommendations on which candidates the search committee should screen. Does that make sense?
Yes.
They should just verify they're certified superintendents and all of this kind of stuff. Years of experience, again, that's something that I think the search committee should probably, I'm just going to go kind of down the list here. Degree requirements I think are pretty obvious. You need to have a degree in education. I don't think we need to place any kind of restrictions. You can have a lot of years of experience and only a BS degree. Most superintendent candidates will probably have a master's degree, but I don't think we need to be making cutoffs there because there's a balance always between experience and formal education. Again, the same thing applies with years of experience. I don't think that we need to necessarily set any parameters for that. Superintendency experience, I think that's something that we probably really do want though, is something, somebody who has experience, has a superintendent, really has, I think the goals are.
Do I ask, what would go right in the dish for years of experience?
I don't think there's necessarily.
Three years minimum experience?
As a superintendent? I'm not sure that that's necessary. If we get somebody that has two, two and a half, and they're really good years and so forth, or somebody that has 10, yeah, I don't know that that's necessarily a parameter that we need to set. I mean, I'm, that's open to, people can weigh in and say they want.
We'd rather leave that with the search committee.
I'd like to leave that with the search committee. And we can make the decision. If they forward us a candidate who's a real great candidate and has two and a half years or three years of experience, we can make the decision. Alternative experience, I'm not sure that that's necessarily relevant. I'm not sure it would be necessary. I mean, I think we really need to get somebody that has a superintendent of schools experience. References I think are a must. Probably, I mean, we should probably pick a number as to how many reference letters we want to see. I would say probably five. It's a high-level position. Typically, three is for lower-level positions, but I think five is probably a minimum of the references. Salary and benefit package to be advertised, that I think, that's probably a parameter that we will need to set if we're going to advertise that.
I did need to set that decision if we're going to, it needs to be established this evening if we're going to put our.
If we're going to put it out there. Or if we want to, and I don't know whether it's prudent for us to make it something as general salary commensurate with experience. I mean, if we establish a ceiling or we establish a range now, I'm not sure that that, it might cause certain candidates to not apply if there's a ceiling and maybe turn up for that. Maybe that's something that we need to discuss is if we wanted to say, okay, let's come up with an upper limit, is there no way Southbridge could afford to or will pay more than a certain number for a superintendent's salary?
If I can just add, what we did was to leave it open and say negotiable, where it leaves it open to somebody to come off of and work in the negotiations portion and still keep the pool large.
In my experience, and I have looked for jobs a while ago, generally there is a number, a low and a high number. If anybody's going to take the time to put together a packet that we're asking for, they don't want to all of a sudden find out that, you know, it's like $30,000, $40,000 below what they would even consider moving for. So I think we need to be realistic and put a competitive range in, a low and a high. And I think we need to establish that too.
As far as recruitment process, advertising venues, I think that, you know, in this day and age, if you're looking for a superintendent job, you're going to go to the internet. I really don't see the value in putting together pamphlets, leaflets, flyers, mailings, all of that kind of stuff. I mean, it's just a, it's a waste of paper, time, energy, and everything else. Have a good job description posted on our website, that's what your job is, and use school spring and whatever venues that MAS C can use cost-effectively for their electronic distribution, that's going to hit anybody who's looking for a job. I don't know that we really need to do much more.
If I may, Mr. Chair. The committee may also seek to utilize MAS S, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. That is somewhere that job seekers and incumbent superintendents would go to as well. Great resource.
That's a good point. Yeah, so you had a bullet on your vacancy brochures, is that what you meant by that?
This is strictly from MAS C, the timeline. But in the, I think the previous search committee did have a brochure. I know speaking to MAS C today, they said they might still be able to have that on file, but Mr. Jovian said that we might be able to get that to me as well.
He's only up until next week.
And speaking to Mr. Kutcher, he thought that that brochure might fit this profile as well, but we have to take a look at that.
Under your heading here, where it says additional issues to be resolved, designation of spokespersons, is that, are there spokespersons for the search committee?
Yes.
I would think at this point probably the chair would be the spokesperson for the search committee. Reference checking and timing, that would be probably the whole committee. Or if the chair would designate somebody on the committee to maybe call references or maybe get a conference call or something like that. You want to make a phone call to a reference letter to follow up?
Well, we're going to leave that to the search committee.
We'll leave that to the search committee, yeah. And expenses for candidates, obviously, we should pay the travel expenses if we ask people to come up and interview, we should pay their expenses to do so. And site visit expenses, the same way, we should pay for whoever's going to go on a site visit, whether the members of the search committee go out to a site visit to where the current, so former superintendent is, then this district should pay for those expenses.
I'm a little, the site visits usually happen after, before, three to five members.
Right.
Site visits are usually the school committee, the site visit, which is fine-tuned.
So it's the final part of.
Right, it's his final site visit. Usually.
And so I'm just going to conclude my comments on this by saying that the salary range that I think we should be looking at is in the neighborhood of $140,000 to $170,000.
$140,000 what?
$170,000.
That's a big range.
That's a big range, yeah. I'd like to narrow that if I migrate. I don't know if that's a, is that a formal motion?
It's not a motion, it's a recommendation for discussion. And the reason I say that is we had in the budget last year for our total superintendency or leadership compensation of $170,000. My understanding from some of the salaries that, like superintendent schools at Tantascwa and other places, we're talking 150, 160 ranges, where we're competing, we have to look at it as not who our, we have to look at the salaries to, we're competing with districts that are close to us, maybe higher-end districts, not just districts that are in our same demographic resources. So I would prefer to have a wider range to work with as a committee to recruit candidates. I'm not saying, but if we put that out there, then we have to be willing to pony it up before we identify a candidate that's worthy of.
Again, I would use the $140,000 as the bottom end and then have to tighten it, but always leave it negotiable. Somebody comes in, let's say you go $140,000 to $150,000, you tighten it. And then later as you grow, you see this blue chip superintendent comes in the door, this is the one, you know, the committee's overwhelmed. At that point, the school committee can come back and revisit it because we left it open. But to get some sort of ballpark, I don't think we should need it that wide open as far as the district.
Then emotionally, we set the $145,000 to $160,000. It seems to be somewhere between the two thoughts.
$145,000 to $160,000. I think I'm okay with that. The only issue is that if you, if you're willing to go above that, the whole notion of putting this out there is you don't want to discourage people who were coming.
And I think you have.
So if, and it's just because we say $170,000 or whatever the number is, the upper limit, does not mean necessarily that we have to do that. It's always going to be a negotiation. But if we're trying to say what the range, the possible range is, and we say $145,000 to $160,000, and then we get in to finally reach well, I guess maybe you're probably not going to, if we put it out there, nobody's going to apply, that won't, that won't work for $160,000. So if we want to establish that upper limit now, I think that's okay, that's a decision of the committee.
Did we get a second on that motion, $145,000 to $160,000?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just think the $170,000 is on the high side. Looking at districts in our area, I was probably around $160,000 at the high side, taking last year's budget, this year's budget.
Wait, you seconded his motion, $145,000 to $160,000?
I'd second that.
Okay, there's a second question, continue on to the table.
I just, I've looked around at the different districts, and yes, Tantascwa, well, they're a lot bigger school and they have a few communities that go to school there. So I think that that's even, I think it was a $156,000. So I'm okay with $160,000 being the cap.
Any other discussion?
My thought was, Ian, was on a higher range, $150,000 to $170,000. We want to attract good candidates, we're a level four district. We've gone through three interim superintendents just on my two years so far on school committee. I think in order to attract good candidates who are experienced, I think we should market it at a higher level. I would be more in line with thinking $150,000 to $170,000, so I just wouldn't support that at that time. This time, I know it's negotiable, but I just think we need to market ourselves high. We need to bring a leader in to stabilize the district and have a big salary to break that. And like Dr. Page had stated, we did budget $170,000 this year for that. So it's just my thought process.
I'd just like to comment, I agree with Mr. Alivo. Only because you're putting it out as it's negotiable. I don't think more money's going to bring you in a better superintendent personally. I've seen superintendents, and when it came down to the money, we really did sit down and negotiate good faith with whatever we can and then came in. But if, like I said, if something happens where all of a sudden this guy in a cave comes in and he's the man, it's negotiable. So I mean, I would support the $145,000 to $160,000 as a member of the row, but I'm open, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that that's it, you know? You see, watch the door and we'll see who we have to deal with, but that's reasonable.
Can we, can we leave it, when we put the announcement out, when we put this out there, can we leave it a little bit more flexible and fluffy? Say, salary range expected to be $145,000 to $160,000 per year, or negotiable based on experience politically?
Yeah, and I think.
Something like that. Then you're saying.
If you can see the brochure that Jack brings in, says that, but the cost of salary runs out. I think it's to leave it open, you don't know. Go ahead.
I think I could be all right with that. The thing is setting that at $170,000 is what I'm saying, and what has been said is that, well, if we market it and the more money's going to bring here from candidates, well, if they're coming here for the money, it's not the person that we want. We want somebody who's going to come here, who's serious about making this district work and taking us and leading us in the direction that we need to get to, get out of this level four status that we're in right now. So I would be all right with setting that at $160,000, open negotiations, again, based on experience.
I would agree, as long as we had negotiable based on experience, with that language in it.
Absolutely. And I think that's where, we'll give the parameter, but in you are working, so you can write that into it, that it's negotiable depending on experience. We can go from there. Okay, open the discussion. All's in favor of $145,000 to $160,000 as the grounds. Opposed? And then Mr. Ball present. Dr. Page, can you go to the, how many candidates in your form of motion?
Yeah. So I move that the school committee request the search committee to send forward three to five candidates that are fully qualified. Obviously, NSC is going to help us to do that, to be considered for, by the school committee.
The motion is to send forth, no, less than three, no more than five to the school committee after they're completed. Go ahead with a second.
Second.
Is the motion second, discussion? No discussion, all's in favor? Opposed? And then Mr. Ball present. Is there anything else that you want to set the direction with? If not, I got to tell, I must say, Miss Condon, great job. I think that, go ahead, right?
Yeah, the only other thing that is, I really would like to see superintendency experience.
Say that again?
Superintendency experience, absolutely. That's something, I don't want anybody forward who doesn't have superintendency experience.
You want to put years on it?
I don't think we need years, but I think we do need superintendency experience.
I would like to see three years. Yeah, I mean, that's just me.
Again, I don't want, I don't want, the only reason I don't want to say three years, sorry for getting out of order here, it's kind of like a.
No, no, no.
The only reason is I don't want somebody with 2.5 or two years to be disqualified out of hand. Maybe they had three years' experience as an assistant superintendent, maybe they're a superstar with two. I don't want that to be disqualified, that candidate to be forwarded to us by the search committee. That's what we're, we can make the decision later on based on whether somebody has one, two, three years or five years of experience as a superintendent. But this is to establish the parameters for the search committee to forward names to us.
Could we add the wording that perhaps, minimum of three years' experience preferred?
Right, that's fine.
Maybe we should have like that.
Three years of experience preferred.
That gives you a last.
But superintendency experience required.
Superintendency experience.
Yeah, I like that.
Got a formal motion, Dr. Page?
Pardon?
Got a formal motion?
So I move that the search committee forward candidates to the school committee for consideration that have superintendency experience with three years or more preferred.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second? Discussion? Any other discussion, all's in favor? Opposed? And then Mr. Ball present. Is there anything else that needs to be added forward?
Just the committee's thoughts on the focus group and surveys.
Do we have sample survey? Do we have, and we want to put those out next week at the open houses, so time is of the essence, so will we have those prepared tomorrow night? The search committee can bing, bing, bing them, and then we'll be done.
If I may, MAS C had sent the previous school committee a list of different questions from a survey. Five, there were five questions. Please select the category that best describes you, parent, employee, resident, student, or other. Number two, please select five most significant current or future issues that the new superintendent will need to address. Number one is the greatest concern of through five, educational leadership, public relations, collective bargaining, facilities management, curriculum, financial management, communication, and then they just rate it. What do you believe will be the most important issue facing the next superintendent? Please identify the top five skills and abilities of job applicants that are most important for the Southbridge School District's success in acquiring outside funding, different. So those are just some survey questions. They gave us five from different schools, some you can't access anymore because they've already taken those surveys off. But in speaking to Mr. Kutcher today, he said that another question to add would be an open-ended question saying, if you could interview the superintendent, what question would you ask? So basically five questions, and if the school committee would like to see something on that survey, otherwise we could leave it up to the search committee. But I would also recommend possibly having those focus groups after open house, just to kind of have parents come in and maybe ask one of the search committee members to run those focus groups, as well as hand out the surveys when the families come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we leave the parameters for the survey and focus groups up to the search committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? And then Mr. Ball present. Is there anything else in school committee to search minute? If not, thank you very much. We'd get a march notice for tomorrow night. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, school committee goal for accelerated improvement plan.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Good evening to all school committee members and to the viewing audience. Thank you and good evening. This information was included in last week's school committee packet. This is with respect to the school committee's goal that needs to be affixed and become therefore part of the AIP. So we have an approved AIP, as it stands right now, the Accelerated Improvement Plan. We have a couple individuals that are working with us from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education who would love to engage the Southbridge School Committee in a workshop format to work on the goal, to work on a goal that would be affixed and become part of the permanent document. If it's the will of the committee, I would love to entertain a conversation with a couple of key individuals with whom we met last week in the very room, who would be willing to come and do sort of a separate meeting, a workshop of sorts to work on the goal. And included in your packet is are some exemplars from various school districts.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the superintendent to engage with relevant representatives in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to organize a workshop meeting to, with the school committee, formulate the goals of the school committee to match or to augment the Accelerated Improvement Plan.
Second.
Is motion second, discussion?
Would it be more beneficial, Mr. Bliss, if we, the entire school committee at that, or would you let that man up? It's a long way.
Let superintendent answer the question.
Sure. I mean, we would love to have as many numbers as we can in a workshop, if that's possible, to this constituent buying.
All right. Alivo? I apologize for your next turn, to you, Mr. Chair. I say the whole, the whole school committee should be there. I think that those kind of workshops are what's going to help us become better and better understand what we're working with in order to lead our district in the future.
Any further discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? And then Mr. Ball present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, school committee action items. A, vote, approve, veto, superintendent's contract. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Go ahead with a second?
Second.
Is motion the second, discussion?
I mean, the only thing I would add is that with respect to Section C on vacation, page five, page five of your contract, Section C under vacation, subsection two, the committee when we last met had discussion around vacation and whatnot. This was council's recommendation that what we had discussed in a different session actually did not need to go in place because this item two took care of that item. I just didn't want the committee to believe, think there was anything.
There was, claimed that's time going by.
I can't believe they'll give you a vacation.
I can't believe I'll ever get it.
There's only.
Any other discussion? Not, all's in favor? Opposed? And then Mr. Ball present. Moving on to B, vote to appoint Officer Luis Torres as school resource officer for the Southbridge Public Schools for the 2015-2016 school year. Dr. Page?
Chair, I would like to amend the motion.
Let me, do we have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Page?
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion. As the school committee's purview is to actually appoint a supervisor of attendance for individuals that can be designated as supervisor of attendance. And so it's actually the purview of the police chief to appoint the school resource officer. So I would like to amend the motion accordingly. And that is to appoint one of the following, Assistant Principal Anthony Fucase, Terry Wallace, or police officers Jesus Rosa, Duane Ledoux, Charlie Bergeron Canaccio, Dean Brunau, or Robert Campbell as the. Ledoux, Charlie Bergeron Canaccio, Dean Bruno, or Robert Campbell as the supervisor of attendance for the Southridge Public Schools.
Amendment on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion to the amendment?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if we could add the elementary assistant principal, behavior interventions as well, that would include Maria Murray and Kathleen Potter to represent our elementary schools, then we have all of our AIP behavior interventions covered.
I would give the superintendent's advice and add those.
Those two are added, do I have a minute?
One second.
Motion a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, so the school resource officer, that person is with us every day. It's not a floater.
Correct.
We've experienced that in the past all the time. So Louis Torres will be our school resource officer at the middle high school predominantly.
Exactly, and that's after a meeting I had with provisional police chief Shane Woodson. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and Officer Torres has stepped up and wants to assume that role, and it's with the endorsement of his provisional police chief and therefore with my endorsement. He adds our role appointment as between superintendent and the police chief. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might add, the supervisor of attendance has to have Department of Elementary and Secondary Education certification for that role. This vote tonight for these individuals will allow them, that don't have the certification, to be able to pursue the certification if they do wish. And so that's the rationale for this.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All's in favor? Opposed? So passes. Now the main motion has amended. We have a motion already in the second. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Not all's in favor? Opposed? unanimous or opposed? Moving on to C, vote, related to the alleged open meeting law violation. I would just want to make a comment before we make a motion to refer. There were no meetings, as was alleged. Matter of fact, I think that some of the issues that came forth, some of the members had no knowledge of the exact agenda. It was generic, it was open, and that's the way the council advised us. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to refer it to Manarica and O'Connell for a quick response.
So move. Sorry.
Motion a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question based on the first violation of the complaint. We'll see which one that would be, based on the recording secretary. There is not a signature on that. Review, sign, and submit your complaint. Was the original complaint signed?
I...yes, it was. No, I take that back.
Because one complaint was signed by the individual, the other was not?
I take that back. No, they were both given to me, and I gave them straight to the file office to make copies. So this is a copy of the original, so it wasn't signed.
So the committee of the whole meeting, based on interviewing Mr. Bliss, that complaint is signed, but the other one is not?
Correct.
So I'm not sure, I mean, I guess we would leave it up to our attorney?
That's true.
But I would like, I mean, if someone is submitting something to us, they should sign the document that they are the ones submitting.
Right. That's why I...
I don't know if we can take official action, but...
Took a call, as a matter of fact, I got a call. We talked with Kim Lozak, and Kim Lozak said, just refer it, and we'll just make a report of it.
Great, so that was my only concern regarding this, is that it wasn't signed.
Any further discussion? Motion by Dr. Page to refer to Manarica and O'Connell? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, so I...second, Mr. Lebo? No further discussion?
No, there's not any further discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm annoyed that this committee spent $220,000 last year on legal fees, and I just don't...I don't want to get behind this, going as down as we can. I mean, I'm annoyed that these were forward, and I really hope this will be the end of such actions by individuals. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all's in favor? Opposed? unanimous or opposed? Moving on to agenda item number six, adjourned, do I have a motion?
No.
Second.
All's in favor? Opposed? unanimous or opposed? Thank you.